Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the special called meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Education to order. Today's February 4th. We'll be having a public hearing regarding HB 581. If there is a agenda before us, is there a motion to approve?
So much.
A motion by Mr. Grimes, a second by Mrs. Hoyes. All in favor? Unanimous. If you're able, please join us for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, everyone. Welcome. We will be having, as I mentioned, our hearing for HB 581 opt-out tonight. The order of events are pretty simple. We'll have a presentation by the superintendent and staff regarding their research into the measures, and then we'll open up the floor for public participation. Some quick ground rules. Each speaker is allowed three minutes to speak. You have a series of lights right in front of you and a little box that makes a lot of obnoxious sounds. If the light is green, you're good. If it's blinking yellow, it means you're down to your last 30 seconds. And if it starts screeching at you, that means it's time to stop. We'll let you go ahead and wrap up your thoughts, but please, once you know that your time is up, go ahead and wrap it up. So with that, Mr. Superintendent.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chairman Valdez. All right. So the reason we're here tonight is we've had two pieces of legislation come at us. Both were passed at a referendum by our voters. One of those has an opt-out option. That's House Bill 581 that was created at the state level, is a one-size-fits-all for the state. We have one that was crafted, House Bill 717, that we believe is more appropriate for our school system. And so our staff, as we've researched this, are proposing to the board to opt out of 581. As part of that process, we've got to go through some hearings and some advertisements, of which we're in the middle of right now. And at these, we just want to clarify why we believe what we believe, but we also want to hear from our community, to hear your views on this. And ultimately, the school board on February 18th will have to make a final decision. So without further ado, let's talk about the opt-out of 581. Obviously, if you've lived in this community, you've been here, you know that this is an attractive community. The growth has been unbelievable over the last 20 years. Through that time period, we have been very blessed to be very successful as a school system, which has attracted more people to our community. So you've got supply and demand issues. You've had historic inflation, particularly the years of '22 and '23. And one of the things that's important to note is this growing imbalance between residential and commercial, where only about 15% of our digest, our property tax digest, comes from commercial. The rest of the revenue comes from residential taxpayers. That puts an extra burden, obviously, on our taxpayers. And particularly in '22, '23, we knew that we had to make some changes in order to protect our citizens. But that residential-commercial imbalance really puts a heavy burden, and we recognize that. Current financial status. Obviously, there's been a lot of talk out there, a lot of confusion. So just to go through this again, Forsyth County Schools has and will continue to provide a senior school property tax exemption for homestead owners age 65-plus. That is not anything a part of this. Some people have tried to conflate that out there. Nobody on this dais is suggesting anything about touching that exemption for our seniors. Our current maintenance operation millage rate is 15.208. The debt millage rate is at 1.418. For three straight years, while those home values were skyrocketing, we cut our millage rates by over three full mills. And our MNO millage rate is the lowest it's been since 2009. We believe we've been good stewards. We run a very lean operation. People want to debate that, and that's obviously their prerogative. But when you look at it on paper and compare us to our competition, we run a very, very lean, yet effective, operation. We've been recognized statewide and nationally as an excellent steward of our resources. We've got a five-star efficiency rating based on our State of Georgia metrics, and we have a AAA bond rating, only one of only six school systems in the country to be able to attain and maintain that. 2024 election, we passed a referendum called House Bill 717. It's a homestead exemption that we locally developed that puts a 4% cap on reassessed values, so we never have those years again where you've got 22%, 23% increases. Now, please note, if we don't set the assessment, we don't assess home values. The county does, the tax assessor. We don't assess those. But what we have said to do our part is if they get assessed at exorbitant rates like they have been, that we will cap what we take from that at 4%. Our House Bill 717 has two goals in mind, all right? The first goal is to make sure we're providing tax relief to our citizens. But the second goal, which is vitally important, is to make sure we don't do that in a way that handicaps our ability to be able to provide an education to our students and the community. This House bill was a unanimous resolution by Board of Education. It got unanimous agreement by our state legislative delegation. That's our two senators, our four, five, six representatives that were involved in that. Everybody agreed that this was the right thing to do. They took it. Governor Kemp signed it for us, and it was put on the ballot for this most recent election. Our 717 that we developed here locally is a floating homestead exemption designed to limit reassessed property value increases at no more than 4% annually, a fixed cap from year to year. We'll come back to that, but that's a very important point. This expires in 2035, and by expiring or having a sunset, you'll hear it called sometimes, it allows us to be able to measure the impact it has on our school system and make adjustments. And in all likelihood, if we're able to live within that and still provide what we need to provide, that'll be something that will ask to be extended beyond 2035. This exemption applies specifically to Forsyth County schools based on our local economic and financial realities, not those for the rest of the state. It was passed by the General Assembly, 24. 74% of our voters passed it in the November election, and it is in effect, and there's no taking it away. It is in effect, and so no matter what happens through these hearings and their eventual vote, there is a cap in place at 4% on reassessed homesteaded values. So that's in place and not going anywhere until 2035. Larry? Our House Bill 717 apparently inspired others at the General Assembly, as they looked across the state and saw other communities having exorbitant rises or increases in their reassessed values. There were several counties that hadn't reassessed in like 10, 15, 20 years. So there was an issue there that the legislature had to look into. So the work that we did, being very responsible stewards of your tax dollars, actually inspired the General Assembly to come up with their own, and they did. But as I said before, they had one focus with House Bill 581, and that was to lower property tax assessments without any consideration of what the local school systems might need to provide services. And I'm not going to read through all these, but if you would take a moment, and this will be on our website, this presentation, but if you look at what we provide here, this is just a sampling of the programs or the personnel or the actions we provide to be able to give the services that our community has demanded. And these are all locally funded by local tax revenues. These are not things that the state are taking care of, but things that our community has come to appreciate, and it's helped our children. It's been vital to our success. Go back there just for one second, Larry. Particularly in this, I want to point out, to be very specific, when you look at things like school resource officers, I think we're so accustomed to that in Forsyth County. We assume that that's just norm for the state. It's not. It's because of our partnership and collaboration with the great Sheriff's Office and a financial investment by our local taxpayers that we're able to have SROs in every school system. The student advocacy specialists are something that we developed. Steve Hahn and Todd Shirley of our Safety Department came up with this idea to be able to track students from a very young age all the way through school, to track them if they've had suicidal or homicidal ideation, so that no child slips through the cracks like we've seen in other systems. And the rest of those, you can read on your own. Thank you, Larry. So House Bill 581, again, was a floating homestead exemption designed, just like ours, to limit homestead property tax bill increases if homes rise faster than inflation. Now, what they're using is not a fixed, what 581 uses is not a fixed cap. Theirs is a cap that is tied to the Consumer Price Index, we think. It is not entirely clear yet. All the legislation says is it will be determined by the Georgia Department of Revenue and its commissioner. So we do not have clarity for sure even how it's going to be measured from year to year. 581 applies to counties, consolidated governments, municipalities, and school districts. And there's concerns with that, because, again, it's designed just to lower taxes. It's not really taking school needs into account. There is no end date. Once this becomes the law and you've not opted out, this is what you're going to be stuck with for the rest of your time. And so this school board, I would ask them to consider, you're making a decision on this that is going to affect the next 30, 50, 100 years of school boards, and there's no opportunity in this to adjust along the way. You'll basically do one of three things. You'll drain your fund balance, if you have one. You'll cut programs and personnel, or you'll have to raise millage rates. And those will be the only options we have left. And of course, millage rates get capped at 20 mills. School systems must, they have a one-time opt-out opportunity. That's what this process is. That ends on March 1st. It was passed in 2024. It went to the voters and was approved in this last election by Forsyth County voters at about 70%. 4% less than ours, but who's counting? It is in effect right now unless we opt out. I've already hit some of these concerns, but 581 being tied to the CPI that we think is going to be the CPI, and I'll show in the graphic here in just a minute, but our concern with that is it's not clear, and it's not tied to our local reality. So if it's tied to a national CPI, we're going to be stuck with a CPI that is impacted by things that go on in Arkansas and Alaska. If it's a state-connected CPI, then we're going to be tied to whatever's going on in Houston County, in Thomas County, in Lowndes County, not just here in Forsyth County. It creates a lot of uncertainty because it fluctuates. As I'll show you on this, it sort of bounces up and down. And every time it goes below what we've long-range planned for, then, again, those three options are going to be in play, all right? Cutting services, making classrooms smaller, cutting people, or raising millage rates. It's also going to create a real challenge for our tax collectors from year to year. There's no expiration date. I've talked about my concerns with that, and we are involved in the one-time opt-out opportunity. Thank you, Larry. When you look at this, and we've added a column in this from our last hearing, we added an additional column, but the two that are highlighted on here, one is a CPI that really was tied to metro Atlanta, up in the Sandy Springs area and on through Fulton County downtown, in areas surrounding, not entirely clear. But you can see from year to year in that column that the first one that's highlighted, just for the Atlanta area, you go from, you know, 1.6 to 9.8 to 8.1, those are those two crazy years that we had, then drops to 3.0. You've got years of 1.6, 1.4 there. If you look at what we believe is the national CPI, correct, Larry? You can see the same fluctuations and volatility, and you've got ours there, which would be, you know, a much more effective way to calculate what our needs are for the school system from year to year. And that would be something we could plan for based on our local economic realities. Thank you, Larry. Just a little comparison, one last time, just to try to drive home the point. At 581 was a one-size-fits-all statewide solution for Forsyth County schools. House Bill 717 was designed with our local delegation. Let's see. Local, local, local is probably what I want to say over and over and over versus being imposed by the state, all right? It's maybe a conservative argument that I'm making to our staff on that, but I would rather local realities drive the car than statewide. 581 is tied to inflation, unclear, volatile, very hard to predict, going to make long-term budgeting a real challenge. 581 was designed specifically to blunt the rise of property tax values as the sole purpose. Ours also takes into account the needs of the school system so we can provide what our folks are asking for in our strategic plan. And, you know, the other thing I would mention too is that, you know, as I talked about, in those years where you're low and you may have to raise millage rates, I think it's also important to note that with a 4% cap, there's going to be opportunities for us to lower millage rates, as we've done over the last three years. And, you know, it's going to be much easier to plan and to do those things when you've got some level of predictability. Larry? Again, all these things are on our website. Would encourage everybody to go and study that. I've sort of zipped through all this right now. And here again, it was done with a collaboration with all the members of our local delegation and our school board. We reviewed local economic trends, our local budget histories and financial planning. It took into account projections for growth. It included reviews of all of our programs that we provide and staffing formulas, developing locally, we believe is the best way to protect property owners while also providing educational needs. And that's the case that I've been trying to make to our board and want you to hear the case that we've been making. Larry? All right. These guys hear this from me all the time, as do our principals, but what I really believe makes Forsyth County schools so special is our commitment to collaboration amongst our teachers and parents, amongst our school system and our business community. Collaboration has been what Forsyth County Schools is all about. That leads to innovation. And I would just tell you that this community, our school board, accountability is something that we're very transparent about, we're very open about, and you only get better if you measure where you are, and that's really what accountability is all about. And this legislation was designed on that collaboration, innovation, and accountability. All right? And again, I'm not going to read through these, but these are the opt-out requirements that we've gone through. Those are there and on the website, and this is the timeline for that to take place at the next slide. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I will turn it back over to you. And thank you, Mr. Hamel, and we'll hear from our community.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Thank you, Mr. Hamel.
Actually, I want to ask one thing. Larry, when I first started in 2019, the local contribution was 51%. Do we know what the local contribution is today to the school budget?
Are you talking at the KBE amount?
No, the local taxpayers pay to cover.
It's closer to 55.
So we're at 55% now covered by local. Okay, thank you.
All right. We are going to begin the public hearing portion of the evening. Again, just a reminder, you have three minutes. Green light is good. Blinking yellow light, not so much. Screaming red light means wrap it up, okay? It's hard to miss. There's only a few speakers, so we'll be a little bit flexible with you, but please don't continue endlessly. Just wrap up your thoughts and we'll move on. The first speaker of the night is Jessica Hagberg.
I've talked to all you guys many times. You guys are always great about giving lots of information and having open dialogue. And so I've kind of taken all of the information that I've been getting, reading online and, you know, researching what other counties are doing. And the things that keep coming up in my mind are, from my understanding, we don't actually have to opt out of this particular bill and then, like, be stuck with an option, not for blocking the cap or whatever. Because if you keep this in place in years where the CPI is more than 4%, we would still have our local one that we just passed that protects us. So either way, you either have to spend less money, or you get to spend, you know, the 4% that you want to spend. And the thing that I always come back to is, like, with collaboration with the county, we have the most money coming in from our taxpayers as property tax value. It's not just the last three years where we needed that floating homestead. Since 2018, our bills for property taxes have gone up 20% to 30%. So, you know, this is something that was kind of avoided until this year. Like, we finally got the homestead, it feels like, in my mind, because for two years prior to that, we were asking for it. The board wasn't making the decision on it. Takes that long to get something on the ballot. And then, you know, meanwhile, our property values kept going up, and they're going to keep going up. So at what point do we say, hey, you've got to make a budget with the 4%, but can you make a budget at 2%? Like, I may have forgotten $20, but I don't get to spend $20. I have to keep it at 16 and knowing that, like, there's going to be all these unexpected things that happen. So I think it's probably a little scary for our board to have to make a budget even tighter because you guys were just now getting used to the 4%. But I'm just afraid that, like, you know, in 10 years, when this expires, because let's say it's expiring in 10 years, that y'all might not be the people here. Who knows who's going to be on the board? And they might be fine with raising millage rates because, you know, whatever. You can't predict that. I'm just afraid that if it expires, we're going to be stuck going, oh, we had 4%. Now I can't make a budget for my own self because I don't have that room anymore in my budget. It's just a little scary that, like, you know, you guys are so unwilling to consider that, like, maybe 4% is too much, because the city of Atlanta says they're opting out, and they've got a 2% cap on their local prioritized version. We're still at 4%. We have the most money coming in. Like, we're a rich county. We've got pretty schools, and our pretty schools are gorgeous, but they don't have to be as fancy as they are, so maybe that's where you tighten up that budget. I just, I mean, I love Forsyth. I love the education. I love what my kids get out of it and what, you know, will continue to get out of this county. I'm just really confused why we're talking about something we all already voted for in November, because I think that's what we already did. So I just kind of feel like it's back and forth a lot. And, yeah.
Is there a next speaker? The next speaker is Stacy Guy.
Good evening, board members. I'm Stacy Guy. I'm speaking as a resident of South Forsyth in District 5. I think I was first here in 2001 to talk about the floating homestead exemption, and that board, quite frankly, was not receptive. I have appreciated boards in recent years. I think the millage rate reductions you guys have done have been tremendous. I think that boards here recently have been much more taxpayer-friendly, and I appreciate that. With that in mind, I think that's what's caught me off-guard with this, is that opting out of HB 581 is by far not favorable to the taxpayer. And I'll give you three reasons why. One, as was brought up last week, I think, the CPI is traditionally lower than 4% over the long period of time. I think most anybody with a rudimentary knowledge of economics knows that. Second, HB 581 was built with the fact that some municipalities may already have a floating homestead exemption in place, and it stacks those homestead exemptions. And that's something that I confirmed with my elected representatives in the Gold Dome. I don't think that messaging, that's come out in the messaging from the Board of Education in this conversation. So if you do not opt out, taxpayers receive the benefit of the lesser of CPI or the 4%. You guys are not talking about that, but that's true, and that's a tremendous tax savings to homeowners. Third, the sunset clause is of a concern to me. You don't know what the future Gold Dome representatives are going to do. You don't know what a future Board of Education is going to do. Maybe I give comfort to you guys, but as a taxpayer, I don't want this to sunset in 10 years. If it sunsets in 10 years and you opt out of 581, we get nothing. Nothing. No floating homestead exemption. So to me, that's a concern. I will remind you, as you already know, homestead exemptions don't apply to commercial properties. They don't apply to industrial properties. They apply to owner-occupied residential properties. They don't apply to rental properties. They don't apply to second homes. They don't apply to vacation homes. And really, they're not going to apply as much to new construction. They're not going to apply to people that are selling their homes. The benefit here has always been people that are going to live in their home for a long period of time. So it's the homeowners that are coming here that are going to establish roots in this community and live here for a long time, like I have, like Jesse has, like many of you guys have. That's the benefit, in that these small little percentages that we're talking about in these floating homestead exemptions, they stack and compound over those years, and significant tax savings that will be realized over a long period of time. Again, I think, speaking to the three of you that are new, don't make one of your first votes up here as one that's not going to be favorable to the taxpayers. It's, to me, it's very, very obvious that opting out of 581 is not a smart thing to do to taxpayers, and I urge you not to opt out of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rose Howerton.
First, I want to thank you for your service. I love Forsyth and living here, and my daughter has gone through school since elementary. And now she's graduated. I haven't done as much research as these other folks, but in listening to them, I just want to let you all know that I agree with what the last two residents have said. So you have a third person who's backing that train of thought. And I was just curious, I wanted to see the slide again that had the numbers, if we can click that, just want to look at the numbers again.
So the HB 717 numbers are what we're proposing. The HB 581 are based on federal bank CPI numbers, and the Atlanta CPI numbers are based on U.S. Bureau of Labor statistics, 12-month changes CPI, metro areas, all items. And so typical what we've done here is, because we think they're based on their prior activity, the 2000 rate is actually based on 2017 CPI numbers, because they couldn't know what the CPI number would be for the current year. They have to base it on a prior activity.
Oh, okay. Thank you. So, yeah, I mean, I can see the benefits of, you know, locking in and capping, you know, saying, oh, you know it's 4%. It's easier than going with fluctuating. But is it true what these last two individuals said, that if we do opt in to 581, ours doesn't go anywhere, right? 717 will still be in place. 581 does not negate our 717, correct? So, you know, opting into 581 gives us that flexibility, but at the same time, when we get to rates like 9.8, you know, our residents of our community know that we are not going to go any farther than 4%. Is that correct? Yeah. Okay. So, yeah, I would continue partnering with my resident folks back here and urging you all not to opt out of 581. I love the fact that you guys put in place the 717. And I guess that's it. And again, thank you for your service.
And again, let me go ahead and just say publicly, and if we haven't gotten that message out, it's an error on our staff's part, but yes, both of them being in place in a year with, you know, increases, it's going to be whichever is lower that would apply, which is absolutely the better deal for the taxpayer. But it's not the better deal when you're trying to budget for a school system with lots of services provided that are not covered by the state government. So that, again, that is, whether you have that in place or the 4% in place, it means you're never going to get more than 4, but there could be a year where it dips down to 1.2. And as it does, as you can see on the chart, the numbers of years that it was below 4, those would be years that either millage rates would have to be raised or services cut and staff laid off, which we all say we love our schools, but that also comes at a cost of investment. So, but yes, if both of them stay, it ends up being the lower of whichever happens to hit that year. Yep. Thank you.
Next up is Andy Coleman.
Andy Coleman, lifelong resident of District 4, North Forsyth. Like Stacy said, I was caught off-guard by this. I didn't expect to be up here speaking, but I've prepared some words. Good evening, members of the board, superintendent, and fellow residents. I want to thank you for dedication to our school system and enacting a floating homestead exemption. Your leadership has helped make Forsyth County one of the best places to live and raise a family, and I truly appreciate your time and commitment to ensuring our schools remain among the best in the state. That said, I'm deeply concerned about the possibility of the board opting out of House Bill 581 and instead implementing a fixed 4% cap on and instead implementing a fixed 4% cap on annual property tax increases. The most fiscally responsible approach is to allow tax increases to be capped at the lower of 4% or the Consumer Price Index. Why does this matter? Well, over the past two decades, I went back and ran some tables. CPI has been below 4% the majority of the time. If the board chose, chooses a fixed 4% cap instead of following CPI, homeowners will face unnecessary tax increases most years. This benefits government revenue, not families. Had CPI-based limits been in place over the past 20 years rather than a fixed 4% cap, I ran both of those. My family and every homeowner in Forsyth County would have saved tens of thousands of dollars in accumulated property taxes. That money could have gone towards education, savings, or been reinvested in our local economy. Here's a simple comparison. Opting for a fixed 4% tax cap instead of the lower 4% or CPI is like agreeing to always pay $4 a gallon for gas, even if the price drops to 3. Why would anyone willingly pay more than necessary? Homeowners deserve the same fairness with their property taxes. If inflation is low, their tax increases should be also. A concerning justification, I've heard that one of the reasons the board is considering opting out is because a fixed 4% rate would make budgeting easier. If that is truly the case, it's disappointing to hear that making the government's budgeting process easier is being prioritized over ensuring that taxpayers aren't overpaying most years. Homeowners shouldn't be forced into higher tax increases just because it's more convenient to those managing the budget. And frankly, I don't buy that argument because property tax appraisals are going to fluctuate no matter what, especially with the commercial properties. 4% base rate doesn't suddenly make the budgeting process that much more predictable. So if it's the reason for opting out, it's not a very strong one. Forsyth County is already generating more tax revenue. I fully support properly funding our schools and ensuring students and teachers have the resources they need. But this is not a funding issue. It's an issue of fairness. Forsyth County's rapid growth is already increasing tax revenue through new construction and rising property taxes. Opting out of HB 581 and forcing higher tax caps on existing homeowners is an unnecessary burden when a fair solution exists. The responsible conservative choice, the best and most fiscally responsible decision is clear. Do not opt out of HB 581, allowing tax increases to follow the lower of CPI or 4%. I urge this board to stand with homeowners and reject any decision to opt out of HB 581. Let's do what's right, not just for our schools, but for the families who fund them. Thank you.
Thank you. One, one thing I do want to address is I've been seeing this online and this notion that the tax saving difference between one bill and the other, it's measured in the tens of thousands, is completely false. Here's the spreadsheet. Here's a spreadsheet that was produced by someone sitting in this room, and in 10 years, they save 900 bucks. No, not you. I've run the numbers, so I can tell you that that is not.
Hey, Larry, I have a question real quick. Our, our current budget also requires that the first five mills that are collected by the taxpayers, from the taxpayers, is sent to the state. Is that correct?
That's correct.
What is that value at today?
$99 million.
So the first $99 million collected by Forsyth County taxpayers is sent to the state. How much of that do we get back?
None.
None. So the first five mills of the 14, it's 15 to 8, it goes to the state and we don't see it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That brings us to the people that signed up. If there's anybody in the room that didn't sign up and would like to speak, I'll, I'll go ahead and allow you to speak if you would like to.
I have a question. I have some questions.
Sure. Come up. Would you mind coming up here so that it comes out in the video? Tell me your name, please.
Kelly Fields.
Kelly?
Kelly Fields. Yep. So I have a couple of questions. The first one is, you mentioned that the educators here in Forsyth County are what make Forsyth County great. And I would agree with that. I was one for 16 years. My mom retired from here. My sister taught here. I have a child still in Forsyth County Schools. So I am a Forsyth County graduate myself. What I would like to know is what the board plans to do for those same teachers that you're saying make our schools, when you want to hire them and you're saying that, you know, these things are what keep them here, but they can't live in our community where they teach because you've priced them out, because their property taxes are too high. And that is a very real thing. I've lived in Forsyth County for a very long time and my property taxes have doubled and then tripled. And now I'm moving towards quadrupled since I built my house 13 years ago. So that's a huge concern. How do you plan to address teachers that you want to hire and convince them to work here, but they can't live here? And let's be honest, traffic is a major issue. So that's a big concern for me. And some of these are, you know, a little bit just, they're just questions that I think that you guys need to be considering. Are you operating on a budget surplus right now? And if so, what's the plan for that? Because as some of these other residents have mentioned, maybe the budget needs to be tightened up. Maybe the strings, the purse strings need to be tightened up. I know there's been a lot of expenditures that seem, a lot. There's a building that's almost completely empty. The procurement services, I'm still kind of confused about why that even exists. The sign upgrades that were made over $1 million in cost, those seem excessive, especially if we're talking about budgeting and, and pulling those purse strings tighter. Again, as Andy said, you know, why is it that the citizenry who voted, 77% of Forsyth County said yes to this? Why is it that we are responsible to bear the, the burden financially for this? We're all suffering from inflation. We all are. And so at some point, the county has to then back up. 89% of Forsyth County's budget is apparently for salaries. Is that correct? Okay, well, when I taught in 2008, 2009 in the housing crisis, we had furlough days. It wasn't fun. But as someone who lived here and went through that, guess what? My house had to a, a, adjust to that. And this board is responsible for making sure that the county school system does exactly that as well. So just as a concerned citizen who has four children, who's lived here, who's grown up here, who's graduated from here, who's served here, and I do appreciate your service. I know it's not fun to get angry phone calls. But you do need to address some of these really big overarching questions that your presentation really isn't addressing. I get that you're pro what you've presented, but what about the rest of us? Because if you don't.
I'll answer the question if you like. So 2022, I joined this board January of 2023. He was the only one on the board at that time. These three guys are new. 2022 was the largest single tax increase in the history of Forsyth County. My own tax bill went up 26% in one year. That's one of the main reasons why I ran, just being transparent. And I, I don't want, I'm not making this about me, but to answer the question, you're asking, what are you guys doing? So I want to give you that history of what we're doing. So what have we done the last three years? We've lowered the millage rate three times, more than anybody in the state, more than anybody in this county. We self-imposed a homestead exemption. HB 717, that was voluntary. That in February 2023, my second month on this board, we self-imposed that unanimously. That's another step that was taken. Operational costs, administrative costs, if you look at their prorata percent of our budget, they've gone down two years in a row. These are the things we're doing. We're looking at cutting, curtailing spending. We're not, we're paying things cash. We're building schools cash. We're not taking on new debt. We're paying down debt at a record pace. We're doing everything that's within the jurisdiction of this board to get this under control. But this entire conversation leaves out the main problem. And the main problem is growth. This county has been allowed to grow. Zoning policy, land use policy has allowed this county to develop where 85% of our tax digest is residential. That's why when you look at your tax bill, it is a direct reflection of that. There is not enough people contributing to their commercial ta, tax digest to offset the residential tax digest. That's why your tax bill is disproportionately for schools. Our budget is bigger. We service 56,000 kids every single day. You, you know that. We can't control growth. We have no say. We've been clamoring from the hills and mountain tops, and a lot of these same guys that have come up have been as well, but it's outside of our jurisdiction. So until we stop adding 1,200 kids a year to the school system, which is what we're averaging, that's a middle school. Every year, we're adding additional middle schools' worth of kids. In the last 11, 12 years, we spent $450 million building buildings. Until the real issue is controlled, which is growth, to be completely honest with you guys, this board is incapable of fixing the problem with taxes. It's incapable.
I appreciate your response.
As well as home values. And, and I would just, I would just chime in too. When you look at who our competition is for, for high-quality teachers like you, Kelly, our, our competition is in Gwinnett. It's in Fulton, Cobb to some degree. And so when you look, as Chairman Valdez said, at their tax digest being, they, they can pay so much more because of their residential, or not because they're, because of their commercial income that we don't have. But when you look at the commercial income that, that those three counties have that serves as our biggest competition, they have money flowing in that they can afford to give a, a 2% cap as it was suggested, you know, at Fulton and, and other things, because they don't have to rely on the residential like we do. So I just say that to underscore Chairman, Chairman Valdez's point. And the other thing I would say in terms of the, the home values, and this is, I don't mean this as a, as a snarky comment in any way, shape or form, but what this board, in this school system, and what you have done as a great teacher here, it's, the home values have gone up because of the success of the school system. At least as long as I'm here and I believe in this board and the staff that we have here, we're never going to look to do the types of things we would have to do to drive home values, the home values down, because the only way a school system drives home values down is to not be a successful or effective school system.
We do have some pockets of that.
All of those, no doubt. Listen, we. Absolutely. Yep. No, no, no. Listen, Kelly, I'm not disagreeing. Like, we, we have pockets where we have real needs. We, we've had, again, back to the growth, we've had lots of move-ins. And so we've got a lot of gap areas that we've got to close and get better at. There's no doubt. And we recognize that. But that is, even with that, we have growth that is tied to four things. We have a great sheriff's office, so we have a safe community. We have incredible parks and recs and all the opportunity comes from that. We have great medical facilities. And the fourth leg of that is a, is a really rock-solid, that some would say premier school system, always trying to get better. I grant you that, but still one that's very attractive. And those four things have driven up home values, at least in the tax assessor's eyes.
I agree. But I think we do need to then, if you're comparing us to Cobb and Gwinnett and Fulton, go down the road and where they're at now and where is everyone going? They're coming here. So that's going to happen to us. So I don't disagree. You don't control the growth, that that is something that's out of your control. And I do agree that the commissioners who have, you know, come before and maybe even some who are currently, caused a lot of problems. They did not, you know, a lot for the growth. However, that doesn't negate the fact that we as property owners here in this county also have a right to have our own interests protected. And, you know, when we bought in this county, when we grew up in this county, we've lived here a very long time. And you drive us out. Again, you didn't really answer my, is there a surplus in Forsyth County?
There's no surplus.
Okay. That's kind of different from what I saw online, because I saw online it was $179 million surplus.
There's a contingency.
Is that right? $179 million?
A surplus means you're taking in more money.
And that's public, that's public. I mean, you guys have to publicize.
A surplus means you're taking in more money than you need. That has happened previously.
Right. Are you operating in a budget?
We've cut the millage rate.
Okay, but so if you've had it in the years past, so all of a sudden 25 is different? I understand.
You know why there was furloughs? You know why there was furloughs? There was no contingency. That's why there was furloughs.
Well, it was furloughed because the market crashed. And, you know, the majority of your, your tax digest.
And, and, and listen, that, that's, and it's, and it's something that this board, under, under West and Dara, before the new folks came and Jeff Bearden and myself when I was up here, one of the biggest fears that we all live with is 2008, 2009 all over again.
I lived it. I was an educator. And I did not make the salary that they make right now when I was a single parent of two children, one who specially.
And you had furlough days. But what we were, what we were able to accomplish in that, because it, we, we had a small fund balance, even though we had furlough days, we did not have reduction in force, like a lot of systems around us. That was drained. And for the last 12 years, we've been trying to make sure that we get our fund balance back for a couple of reasons. One is at the time, we, we're doing a lot of building for our growth on bonds, and that was able to help us attain a AAA bond rating, which saves the taxpayers money because you get much better interest rates.
And we still have an active loss.
When, when you have that, yep, correct.
So that's still money coming in?
Yep, absolutely. But, but the, that fund balance also is there as that, as that crisis management that we're going to have. And, and at the end of the day, that, that, that covers about two and a half months of payroll, Larry? Of operating costs. So that, that's why, that, but that's not a surplus. That, that is a, a budget item that you have as, as a responsible system. Yeah, in reserves, yep.
And it has a lot of benefits. It has a lot more benefits than just the crisis, which comes not, thank God, not very often. That generates interest every month, is generating a few hundred thousand dollars.
So you're making money off interest as well.
Right. It goes to offset what needs to come from the taxpayer. It goes to offset that.
It sounds like y'all have a lot more revenue coming in than my house does. But I mean, again, it's just back to budget. And I don't want to, you know, take all the time, obviously.
Thank you.
I just, as a concerned citizen, am here as a parent of a current student, a graduate. I think that there needs to be some real conversations about where in the budget, other things need to be cut.
Well, I'll just leave you with one thought. Every single member of this board is very much taxpayer-friendly and we are very much trying to do the right thing for taxpayers. So.
I appreciate that.
It's been a couple of years on this trajectory and we're not going to give up. We're going to continue to go down that path and do everything in our power to help people like you and myself, because I'm not a millionaire. So I'm feeling it just like you are.
No, I'm, I'm still a teacher and took a huge pay cut to leave public education. For a lot of the reasons that we've discussed tonight, so.
And we'll continue to work towards what's best for taxpayers.
Thank you.
I would remind the board and the board members that the last three years, we've had $79 million in unfunded mandates in terms of TRS and healthcare increases that have been passed down by the state as well.
Well, that's the local fair share that just went up to 55%. It's because it's being passed down from the state.
Yep. Yeah, it's, it's tens of millions of dollars that the state has passed into our, our local budget unfunded, which, you know, it's their prerogative, but it does add to that budget growth. All right. I'll give one last opportunity if anybody that is not on the list would like to speak.
Can I ask a question?
I think she wants to say something.
I just wonder if you guys are going to ask, if, if what's limiting you guys is not being able to communicate or control what the county commissioners do, because that's what ends up pigeonholing, like what the Board of Education has for money to spend. At what point can we actually have a county meeting where the Board of Commissioners and the Board of Education can start setting precedent and rules and tax collection and allocation so that you guys can stop blaming each other for why you guys want more money? It seems like everybody should, like, the commissioners who control the growth and how you guys, we have so much more residential, should start actually working with the Board of Education so the money can start actually benefiting.
I mean, that, it's a good question to ask them. Have, have you asked them that? I would ask them that question. It is. I agree with you. I would ask them that question. Did, did you want to say something? Just let us know your name so everyone knows who you are.
Hi, my name is Meadow Fishback. I go to the school of Little Mill. And if we keep bringing up, like, more of the tax in our homes, and I don't see it really helping our budget of the school. Because I eat school lunch, because sometimes I don't want to pack my lunch. And it's like the same school lunch every day, and it's not really doing any health. And I see it, like, we have, in the counselor's office, we have, like, stuff that can help other students. I see that probably part of our budget. But I don't see, like, the rest going into our school, because most of our stuff could be rundown. And then if we also bring up tax property in the houses, it could run away some of my other community members. Because if their parents can't keep up with the taxes, that means they can't go either, can't stay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meadow.
Thank you, Meadow.
All right. If there's no one else, I'll seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, everyone.